Good evening. I am Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 on this 30th day of April 2024. Thank you to those who have joined us here in person and to those joining us online. I ask that you join me in a moment of silence. And this evening, I offer up this moment of silence for our dear beloved Principal, Mr. Vincent Darby, who passed away last week. And so I ask that you keep he and his family in your prayers and your thoughts. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now begin our awards and recognitions. We will be starting with the first place, Virginia Ajoey.
Our first recognition, excuse me, this evening is for winners of the Future Health Professionals State Leadership Competition. Please welcome talented students from Bayside High School and Health Science Academy. The Virginia Health Occupations Students Association, or HOSA, is to become leaders in the global health community through education, collaboration, and experience. These students competed in the 2024 Virginia HOSA Future Health Professionals Leadership Competition in March. The Bayside High School team competed against various high schools from around the state. Bayside students placed in 11 events and brought home seven first-place awards, six second-place awards, and four third-place awards. These competitors can represent Virginia at the International Leadership Conference in June. The first-place winners and their competition categories are Andrew Jakobowski, Andrew Huang, Lilian Yoder, Caleb Ocampo, Megan Moreno, Grace Degrave, Mark Ellen Espiritu, Elena Gonzalez Seho, Andrew Huang, and Tyler Nguyen. Samuel Hamilton and Christine Moore are co-advisors of the HOSA Future Health Professionals Chapter at Bayside. Congratulations, students. We are proud of you.
Our next recognition this evening is for another Virginia Beach Schools' state wrestling champion. Please welcome Joseph Irazari. Josiah Irazari of Tallwood High School capped an amazing career by winning the Class V State Championship at 113 pounds. He was on a mission this year and accomplished his goal. In the state finals, he avenged his loss last year, convincingly winning 7-3 over the returning state champion. He is a four-time VHSL state placer, first, second, third, and sixth place in his time wrestling for Tallwood. He is a three-time Class V Regional Champion, has won numerous tournaments over the past four years, and earned All-American status last year at the NHSCA Junior Nationals, which I can tell you is a really hard competition. Over his impressive career, he amassed a record of 105 wins and 11 losses. Josiah carries himself well in the classroom as well, holding a 3.75 GPA. Congratulations, Josiah. We are proud of you.
Our next recognition this evening is for the State Pole Vault Champion. Please welcome Landon Walker. Landon is a senior at Tallwood High School. He won the 2024 Region V Pole Vault Indoor State Championships. This was Landon's first state title. He was previously a state runner-up and a two-time Regional Champion. Landon has finished as high as fifth in national competitions. And Landon also has a 3.43 GPA, as he works towards his diploma in advanced studies. Congratulations, Landon. We are proud of you. This concludes the School Board recognitions for this evening.
Dr. Robertson, Dr. Robertson, as everybody's leaving, Dr. Robertson, how high did he say? He was 13. Yeah, 13, over 13 feet high. Yeah. Over 13. Yeah. Where's my other agenda? Do you have an agenda right there? Oh, I have it. No, I just like to go through. Okay, on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? All right, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open. Mr. Callen, how do you vote?
Okay, Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and one abstention.
And that abstention is mine. And for the record, I was not at the last School Board meeting. Okay, the superintendent, oh, yes.
Madam Chair, that was for the, this is for the adoption of the agenda, not the approval of the minutes.
Oh, my gosh. I'm a yes. I'm so embarrassed. Yes.
Okay, so for the record, we have nine ayes for the approval of the, for the adoption of the agenda.
And that's why I tell you, you run this. Okay, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Superintendent's report and recognitions. Dr. Robertson, we look forward to your report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families. I'm proud to announce the Virginia Board of Education recently recognized five of our schools with the highest achievement award. That's more exemplary performance awards than any other district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Congratulations to Green Run Collegiate, Kingston Elementary, North Landing Elementary, Old Dominion School, and Rosemont Forest Elementary for being among 37 schools in Virginia to receive the highest achievement award. This designation recognizes students and their educators for excellence in reading, mathematics, and science, and for narrowing achievement gaps. In addition, two of our high schools, Tallwood and Green Run, were among 27 schools in Virginia to receive the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award for making progress in core subject areas and graduation rates. Students, teachers, and staff should know that because of their hard work, Virginia Beach City Public Schools received more awards than any other district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I'm tremendously thankful for their diligence and dedication. During this month of the Military Child, we've been showing our 16,000 military-connected families how much we appreciate their service to our country. The opening reception of the Art of Being a Military Child exhibit at Lynn Haven Mall was a big success, with students from more than 60 of our schools putting their creative talents on display. Military leaders in Virginia's superintendent of public construction, Dr. Lisa Coons, helped us honor military families. WTKR news anchor Kurt Williams not only emceed the reception, but he also did a wonderful story on our Anchors for Life Clubs. Military students at Salem Middle spoke about how the club helps them adjust to moving to a new school. And on April 17th, all of our schools celebrated Purple Up Day. Service members from Joint Expediary Base Little Creek Four Story greeted Shelton Park Elementary students with cheers and high fives as they arrived at school that day. Students and staff at Princess Anne Middle and other schools wore purple to show support for our military-connected students. And Ocean Lakes Elementary honored military families with a parade around the school. Our middle schoolers had a thrilling time exploring STEM careers, touring the Old Dominion University campus at Beach Girls Rock earlier this month. Students learned about the engineering behind theater set designs, tested moon impact theories for NASA's upcoming Artemis mission, and discussed how to make video games more engaging. Several parent chaperones joined in the fun, and our students talked with current ODU students about college life. Thanks to our Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and our partners at Old Dominion University for helping with the spring workshop of Beach Girls Rock be a rewarding experience for our students. Five Virginia Beach schools are becoming official tree campuses, thanks to the Great Outdoors Learning Project. Virginia Beach City Public Schools and Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation work with community partners to help students use their science and math skills and learn about the important roles trees play in the environment. Arbor Day and tree planting ceremonies took place at Thalia, Brookwood, and Corporate Landing Elementary Schools, and at Plaza and Corporate Landing Middle Schools. Each school will be recognized this spring as official tree campuses by the Arbor Day Foundation. Dominion Energy sponsored the planting of more than 50 trees at Corporate Landing Middle to offset the removal of other trees for landside transmission lines that are part of the company's offshore wind project. On April 12th, city staff and school officials joined Brookwood Elementary students and Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation representatives for a tree planting ceremony to commemorate the 44th Tree City Designation for the City of Virginia Beach. It's great to see so many community members come together to support learning in a healthier environment. And then finally, well, no, I'm sorry. First Colonial High School recently received coverage from the National Association of Secondary School Principals for its Thrive Thursday program. The school's principal, Dr. Dan Miani, wrote a story about Thrive Thursday for the association's website. He explained how surveys revealed that although students believe staff members care for their well-being, many students don't understand how the curriculum relates to their post-secondary goals. More importantly, students want more opportunity to explore how their work in school might connect to what they want to do after high school. Those results gave rise to Thrive Thursday. It takes place during one lunch, where all 1,500 students share the same 40-minute lunch period every day. The idea is to use some of that time to let students explore a wide variety of interests, including photojournalism, home building, auto mechanic work, crime scene investigations, and more. While it started with teachers leading the sessions, now community members and the students themselves are co-leading the effort. Dr. Miani says he's proud how student, staff, and community members are making connections in a learning space that is welcoming and safe. Good job, First Colonial. We know you'll continue to thrive. And then finally, I'd like to remind our families about the Family and Student Wellness Expo this, on May 11th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Bayside High School. Taking place during Mental Health Awareness Month, this free event will provide fun and healthy opportunities for all, including games and activities, the VB CPS Scratch Food Truck, the Bayside High School Band, and inflatables for the kids. There will be vision and hearing screenings, as well as a vaccine clinic. Families will learn about mental health, summer programming, summer programs, extracurricular activities, career exploration, and more. So join us on Saturday, May 11th, at Bayside High School. And thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
And I also have some recognitions. Yes. So, I'm proud to announce tonight that you have approved our recommendation for Alicia Edwards, currently an admin assistant at Loxford Middle School, to be the next Assistant Principal at Princess Anne Middle School. And Alicia, I see you have some guests. Very good. Congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes from April 16th, 2024's regular School Board meeting. Are there any modifications to the April 16th, 2024 regular School Board meeting minutes as presented? All right, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion, and that is Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? The voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and one abstention for the approval of the meeting minutes from April 16th.
Thank you. All right, on to public comments. The School Board will hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the School Board agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker will be Matthew Cody Connor. Speaker number two had to cancel, and then it will be Kim Mayo.
I will stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear. These words are some of the many of Martin Luther King's words that I have turned to often in the last couple of years. He has been a role model for me for much of my life. I've always admired the ability he had to speak to people's hearts. But more so, I admired how he always chose love, and believed in, and fought for equality. His example of persistence and determination in the fight for human rights has been one I have clung to, as I have witnessed the School Board and lawmakers across the country attack books, history, especially Black history, and the LGBTQ community. You would think, after watching you pass every bad policy you can get away with, I would at this point be feeling discouraged, maybe even defeated. But I stand before you just as full of determination and hope as ever. Just as those before us have pushed back and overcome hate time and again in our history, we will continue to do so in the future. We know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed. It was not that long ago that schools in this country were segregated. My father was born, and my grandparents became adults in a country where segregation was legal. Some of you on the dais may have memories of segregation in this country. We have come a long way since then. We have watched waves of hate rise and crash time and time again throughout history, and we will watch again as this new wave is broken and dissipates against the shores of truth and love. Title IX has been updated to make it clear that it protects people against discrimination based on gender identity. There are lawsuits being filed across the country fighting against these discriminatory policies, and many, most, are winning. There are two lawsuits currently against the Virginia Department of Education. I expect there to be more. This may be my 26th speech here, but Dr. King gave 2,500, more than 2,500, to get us to where we are today. As you continue to clutch all teeth and nails, the precipices of fear and hate, I will continue to stand firm on the right side of history. I stand here confident in my cause, because like Dr. King, I understand that the arc of the moral universe is long, but the bend is towards justice. And remember this, even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed, that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all are created equal.
Our next speaker is Kim Mayo.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to pass in my second grader's Chromebook. Would anybody like a Chromebook? Welcome. Congratulations. Would you like a Chromebook? Mrs. Manning, would you like it? Chair Melnick? Anyone? Dr. Robertson? Ms. Brown? No. Well, I'm concerned with overuse. I have a security report. One day, my seven-year-old did searches at school all day long. The report shows searches at 8:47, 8:48, 8:54, 9:02, 9:11, 9:20, 9:26, 9:27, 10:19, 10:30, 10:32, 10:34, 10:35, 10:37, 11:24, 11:25, 12:32, 12:33, 2:00 PM, 2:01, 2:13, and 2:15. Our friend Mark toured our school for his son, a prospective student, and was shocked kids are on Chromebook all day. He put his kid in private school. I asked our school IT staff for a report in February showing cumulative total of Chromebook time, and my understanding is there is not one. After that, I addressed Chromebook overuse with Dr. Robertson and Mr. Callen at the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations, VBCCO Civic Forum. I appreciate both of your good leadership and your attendance at our event. Chromebook time is supposed to be limited, but some schools, and some schools don't even give kids Chromebook until the fifth grade. My brother and sister-in-law are public school teachers, and were alarmed by our students' Chromebook, just sitting on the desk all day like a pencil. They even use it in music class, and I thought music was for singing and playing instruments. I spent a lot of time in our school volunteering. Our principal was not happy to hear my legitimate concerns, and instead of working to resolve it, following my email, she lashed out at me. We have some really talented teachers, and I think we can improve. Why does every elementary school kid need a Chromebook? I'm unsure of specifics, but I heard this expense is in the million-dollar range for taxpayers. Is this the best use of limited resources? I'm opting my child out. My opt-out is until we can get this under control. I'd like reporting visibility to show cumulative time and more oversight. I don't email School Board often, but you've all been helpful, so I will update your board. Thanks for your time.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speakers. Our first online speaker is Nikola Jorviv. Please unmute.
Thank you. Good evening. Dear School Board members and Dr. Robertson, my name is Nick Georgiev, and I'm speaking again tonight, because nothing has been done for our child and all the kids that were negatively affected by the unapproved selection process for ODS. And it's been 11 months now. Simply enhancing the cluster program is not a viable solution for any student, and it's very unfair. It's unacceptable that the School Board refuses to discuss this issue in public and follow the recommendations from VDOE about a possible remedy. Last week, the gifted office released the decisions for ODS from this year's selection. All students from the highest tier, students with scores 555, were automatically accepted based on their ratings. And finally, the system is working again. While this shows that the approved scale can work to offer seats based on merit, it also shows the unfairness of last year's process for our child and other students. Last year's unapproved process implemented in secret that favored luck over merit denied our daughter the full-time gifted services she was deemed to deserve and need. This year, our child reapplied, and with a similar application, she was again rated a 555 and placed in the highest tier. That proves that if the approved scale and the local plan had been followed last year, she would have been offered a seat at ODS. Unfortunately, this year, the seats are very limited, and some of the students left behind last year are competing with each other. That's why VDOE investigated and strongly recommended reevaluation and adding seats at ODS for affected students like our daughter. We recognize that decision is in your hands, and it's your responsibility to request the administration to follow the first recommendation. Budget cuts cannot be an excuse, since the funding for gifted students has increased. Legal liabilities cannot be an excuse, since the division claims to put students first. Improving services for all gifted students includes accommodating those who are currently negatively affected. Ignoring them undermines your claims of caring for all of the gifted students. We cannot accept this unfairness and urge you to ensure that our children are not left behind as collateral damage from last year's mistake. Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Sawyer. Please unmute.
Good evening, Dr. Robertson and School Board members. Today marks about a year of frustrations for parents like myself, who had a child that was denied appropriate services at ODS due to an unapproved process that no one would have approved. Looking back, I remember maintaining this feeling throughout last summer that the School Board would do something, because what happened to us was unequivocally not approved. The School Board, they're supposed to be our advocates. They represent us. They would make sure that the process that they approved was followed. And I think I was one of the only parents in our group to keep insisting the School Board would help us. I remember VDOE listening to us in the fall and acknowledging the situation. I remember them saying, "We are not partisan, but we will objectively and comprehensively look into this situation." And the only reason VDOE did that site report was because of the dozens and dozens of parent concerns they received due to the five-year plan not being followed, leaving children and families with no backup plan, since they didn't know. I remember the head of Gifted of the State telling me she thinks she knows the plan word by word, because she spent that many hours reading it. Then they came out with site report and recommendation. It states, "It is recommended that VB CPS consider a reevaluation of ODS applicants who were placed in the rising second-grade pool during the 2022-23 school year, including adding seats at ODS for the 24-25 school year. The multiple changes to the scoring system made the selection process for the 2022-23 school year and altered the consistency of prior-year selection processes, and thus the program which resulted." So, any person would think, well, of course VB CPS will want to try and follow these. But no, it seems like the opposite has happened. That recommendation is specific for next year, so it needs to happen now, and instead there's just a refusal to even discuss it. And again, I watched the School Board members refuse to approve the initial amendments that Admin presented, which are the changes that happen to our own children. So you did not approve what happened to our children, and VDOE is recommending a solution. How is it ethical to ignore this? You may not know this about me, but my personality really is not confrontational, and I'm more of this peacemaker, idealistic type of person. But this situation has truly rocked, rocked me to the core, like all of my trust in the public school system and the integrity of the School Board. I cannot accept such injustice to a group of children that your governing body, VDOE, also recognizes and officially recommends a solution. Thank you for your time.
Speaker three is not online, so we will go to our next online speaker, Holly Bennett. Please unmute.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I want to begin by commending you as a board for all that you have accomplished and worked through over the past year. I know your job isn't easy, so thank you. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the importance of transparency. I was shocked to find out this morning that the formation of subcommittees for the next local plan for the gifted appears to have been hidden from parents and other stakeholders. The lack of transparency when it comes to changes in the gifted programming for our students has been extremely concerning over the past year, and it seems to be getting worse. I've reached out to the School Board pleading for transparency and solutions for mistakes which are negatively affecting students. Despite multiple requests in recent weeks, the school board refuses to add the state's report and recommendations for the V B C P S gifted program to their agenda. Mrs. Melnick responded to me yesterday notifying me that the report and recommendations from the state would not be discussed tonight, but the upcoming gifted education plan would be. She then quoted Dr. Lisa Coons, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, stating that any change that may take place related to gifted programming in the school division would ultimately be the responsibility of the school board. Mrs. Melnick added that she looks forward to working collaboratively with the staff to finalize the five-year plan for our gifted students. This response was honestly really tough to read. Um, not only did it feel kind of dismissive of parents' requests for transparency, but also dismissive of those from the state who spent so much time investigating the gifted services in V B C P S and developing recommendations. Mrs. Melnick seems to explain that the school board is not legally obligated to follow the recommendations of the states. And her last sentence also kind of feels like there's not an interest to collaborate with the parents, V D O E, or the gifted community advisory committee. Parents have the right to know what V D O E recommends when it comes to our children. Parents have the right to hear discussions about educational services that our children need. Parents have the right to attend discussions for the next local plan for the gifted and offer their input and ideas. Parents have the right to send their children to school confident that they are learning and growing. I care about our district's students and educators. The attrition of talented educators and students in our district is alarming. Please know that your decisions will determine whether or not parents and educators trust you. At this point, there's a lot of broken trust that must be repaired. Whether or not students have access to the curriculum they need is up to you. Not all gifted students have the same needs. One curriculum is not appropriate for every gifted child. They have needs that exist on a continuum, which is why V B's- V B C P S should offer a continuum of services for these students, just like other leading districts in our state. Yes, you have no legal obligation to follow V D O E's recommendations, but you do have an ethical responsibility to these students. Transparency is important and should be prioritized. Thank you so much for your time.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, our first item under information is our interim financial statements for March twenty-twenty-four, and we welcome Daniel Hopkins, Director of Business Services.
Good evening. Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, school board members, Dr. Robertson. As of March, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as illustrated in the first graph. The state budget hasn't been approved yet, but the General Assembly is going to reconvene on May thirteenth to vote on May fifteenth. As far as I know, they're planning on next year's budget, and they don't plan on changing this year's budget anymore. So as I reported last month, this would mean our our state revenue would be down four-point-six million dollars this year. The budget office already knows about this, and it's part of their planning process. Federal revenues are federal revenues are at a showing a favorable trend as of the end of March. We received impact aid payments of approximately fourteen-point-three million dollars year-to-date. Other sources of revenue year-to-date through March are favorable at this point in the fiscal year. They are up about four-hundred-seventy thousand dollars from last year, mainly due to the class action settlement received of eight-hundred-ninety-two thousand and a decrease in the sale of capital assets. Sales tax receipts, assuming the General Assembly doesn't make any changes, will be at an unacceptable level at the end of the year. Year-to-date through March, we are approximately eight-point-five million dollars lower than the same time last year. Although we might be turning the corner with year-over-year change because April sales tax for the month is actually up three-hundred thousand dollars compared to last year. That's the first time this year. The last graph shows that the expenditures and encumbrances are trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this time, I'll take any questions.
Okay, none this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. And our last i- um, item under information is our five-year plan for the gifted education of the gifted update. Welcome, Dr. Crystal Lewis-Wilkerson, Director of K twelve and Gifted Programs.
He's a lot taller than I am. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Crystal Wilkerson, Director of the Office of K twelve and Gifted Programs, and I'm here this evening to provide an overview of the process that we're following to develop the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty local plan for the education of the gifted. Toward the conclusion of the update of the of the next plan, I also pro- I also plan to provide you an update on the work that we have already done this year to increase support of gifted learners for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which falls within the current five-year plan. Joining me this evening is members of the gifted administration team, Dr. Wilkins McCoy and Ms. Bahuparopoulos. As you are aware, our division provides ongoing screenings to identify and provide services of gifted students. The current five-year local plan for the education of the gifted encompasses a K twelve continuum of gifted services as displayed on this slide. I will pause to ensure that you have a moment to review the continuum. It is important to note the continuum displays sh- this this continuum displayed shows opportunities only available for students who have been identified as gifted. However, we do offer a wider range of other advanced academic programs, such as Plaza Middle School Years, I B Program, as well as high school academies and centers, so students can pursue a wide range of rigorous and advanced academic programs aligned to their interests. Here, you can see the timeline that we're following to develop the next five-year plan. We have the goal to present to you the proposed plan for information in August as the identification and selection process is utilized next school year will impact the beginning of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which fall under the twenty-five to twenty-thirty plan. Stakeholders have been provided the opportunity to participate in developing the next plan, and as you can see, throughout the summer, subcommittees will be working diligently to produce an effective plan. Rigorous and thoughtful work occurs within each stage. Throughout this school year, we have received an enormous amount of input from our community to also consider with the five-year plan development that we have responded to and will be utilizing during committee meetings for consideration. Due to feedback from the G C A C and stakeholders regarding a need for more communication than in prior years, we are not only providing our parents, staff, and community a public comment period, but we are also adding another opportunity for public input on the draft plan. Using the K twelve Insights platform that has been used to collect input from our community on the strategic framework, we are developing a feedback instrument to solicit input on the work of each five-year plan component, which our subcommittees are developing. The window will be open from May the fifteenth through the twenty-ninth, and results will be used for consideration during the June and July subcommittee meetings. Please keep in mind, testing begins this September, so the team is under a lot of pressure within a tight timeline to ensure that we can begin the school year strong and with clarity for how we will assess our students to identify and select them for gifted services. Allow me to explain the process the committee will follow to do this important work. Over the next few months, the committee will work with within five subcommittees made up of a variety of stakeholders. During intense planning sessions, the subcommittees review the school division's twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five local plan, National Association for Gifted Children, pre-K through twelve gifted programming standards, the V B C P S graduate profile, data, and stakeholder feedback to ensure the next plan addresses stakeholder feedback, best practices for gifted learners, aligns with the compass to twenty-thirty, and our collective vision for the future of gifted education services in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The subcommittees must ensure the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty local plan addresses all the components required by the V D O E as displayed on this slide. To address the components, school divisions develop goals for each based on data, stakeholder feedback, teacher, and student needs. The component equitable representation of student is contained within each of the other five components. These five components reflect the work of the five subcommittees. The identification subcommittee addresses the assessments, processes, and practices utilized to identify gifted students. They also review and address O D S selection processes and practices. The delivery of services subcommittee addresses the comprehensive continuum of services which address the needs of all gifted, identified gifted students. They work to refine the differentiated instructional approach while enhancing us- while enhancing the program and services. The curriculum and instruction subcommittee addresses differentiated curriculum and instructional opportunities reflective of the unique needs of all gifted learners. They review resources, curriculum, and instructional practices to provide input. The professional development subcommittee addresses continuous differentiated professional learning for G R Ts, cluster teachers, principals, and other school staff on the identification and the education of gifted and talented students. And finally, the parent and community involvement subcommittee addresses promoting the awareness of the unique needs of gifted students among parents, school staff, and the community. They will examine the communication strategies and make suggestions for opportunities to collaborate more with community partners, families, and ensure a strong school-home partnership. We intentionally bring the subcommittees together in order to collaborate all their subcommittee work, and when the work is completed, the draft plan will be presented to the school board and, of course, made public, made available for public comment. Know that we also continue to partner with the G C A C in this important work. During our March and April gifted community advisory committee meetings, our G C A C members provided feedback to the Office of Gifted Education related to specific areas that they felt were important to focus their initial efforts. These areas included the division's operational definition of giftedness, the division's statement of philosophy for the education of gifted students, and the program goals and objectives for the upcoming five-year plan. Their requests for input will be shared for additional consideration during subcommittee meetings where each G C A C member has selected a pathway to participate in one of the five subcommittees. We would be remiss if we did not take a moment to thank our G C A C members for the time and energy that they give and to provide our team with ongoing input. While the main purpose of this presentation is to provide you an update on the development of the next plan, it is important to make you aware of the work that our team is doing to enhance resources and practices for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, much of which is in response to school board and stakeholder feedback. While we have always offered school-based support as a gifted team, which has included instructional coaching, gifted curriculum resources, and professional learning, we are enhancing our support even more to enhance our gifted cluster program. We are updating learning walks for learning walk look-for's to support greater collaboration between the gifted office administrators and G R Ts. We have an increased emphasis on the partnering across the content areas to collaborate and identify more opportunities to infuse gifted pedagogy across subjects. We are also providing more opportunities for administrators to participate in professional learning related to gifted learners. We recently provided both elementary and middle school principals updates, and will be offering additional sessions focused on the needs of gifted students and how to support differentiated instruction for gifted learners. The division will increase centralized family communication using Alert Now or Parent Square, and G R Ts will also be increasing family outreach at the school level while offering G R T's support and family outreach to ensure fa- parents are well-informed of their gifted learner's progress. We are also excited to ensure enhancement enhancements to curriculum and instruction. We have learned from our stakeholders a request for a focus on continuous enhancement of our gifted resource cluster program. To address this, we will be reviewing in-depth the various resources available to gifted learners with principals, G R Ts, and cluster teachers. As shared, we have been working to address all input shared with us to be thorough in our response to enhanced curriculum. One question that arose this year was related to old donation schools curriculum. We want to clarify that O D S does not have a separate curriculum program or package. O D S uses the foundation of the Virginia S O L's and V B C P S curriculum, and their teachers develop extensions of those through curriculum design and enhanced gifted strategies based on the needs and interests of their students. In working collaboratively with the part- with the principal at O D S, we are planning opportunities for collaborative sharing of learning experiences and ideas between O D S and our G R Ts and cluster teachers to add to the resources available for gifted learners. We are also bolstering the gifted resource cluster program by adding several math extensions for second through fifth grade. These extensions will support students exhibiting mastery of select standards and indicating a need for additional enrichment. G R Ts and cluster teachers will partner to review data and determine which students are ready to engage in such experiences. Our G R Ts will have access to the new curriculum extensions in addition to the multitude of enrichment resources such as rich tasks, exemplars, hands-on equations, groundworks, and M cubed available for students in need of extension opportunities. We also deliver the elementary math curriculum similar to reading through a small group model, so data informs student groupings and allows for students with varying needs to receive differentiated instruction. We have gifted resources available in reading as well. Another curriculum enhancement will be providing G R Ts with increased resources, professional learning, and strategies to facilitate independent study experiences. The focus of the resources and professional learning will be on elementary and middle school gifted learners who exhibit mastery and a need for additional rigor. Students will be able to engage in content-aligned independent studies in the areas of science and writing. And again, this does not limit a G R T from providing other differentiated learning opportunities for students. These are in addition to what we have currently and in response to feedback. We look forward to returning to you with an excellent twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty local plan for the education of the gifted in August. We are confident our upcoming plan development will allow us to continue to to serve our gifted students while setting forth a guide for strengthening gifted services across all identified components within the plan. We thank our subcommittee members and our school board for your time and energy to help us make a difference, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
Uh, my questions have to do with the subcommittee
Okay.
uh, meetings. Uh, and you indicated that you've already started.
Yes.
Who is on the subcommittee? This is subcommittees, and how are they? Uh, how are they appointed or or how are how are they invited? Are parents of gifted students invited? I mean, who exactly is a part of this?
Sure. Yep. Should go back to that slide, although I can't. I don't need to. Okay. So on this slide, it indicated a variety of of those members. So gifted resource teachers, um.
Are you talking about slide four?
Slide four, yes. Gifted resource teachers, teachers, um, parents, old donation school staff, building administrators, central office.
Gifted resource teachers, teachers, um, parents, old donation school staff, building administrators, central office. So all of those are, are specific components. It indicates on here, students are involved and they're involved because they get input from the advisory committees that they have at their individual schools. They're going to report to the GRTs who report back to us for considerations for the committees. We put out a principals packet memo and, um, it's a wide net to our school board. I mean, our, um, teachers and our, all of our, any of our instructional staff or, uh, members of our school division who wants to be a participant can certainly sign up and they fall under an umbrella of the things that you see on slide five. So it might be some old donation school staff members, building administrators. I know we had some ESL teachers yesterday. A variety of those. They also, many of them serve as parents, um, as well as, uh, folks that work for our school division. So they serve in a multitude of, um, capacities. And then we lean in on our gifted advisory committee as I, um, shared with you. They selected their pathway. So, uh, we, we were trying to honor which pathway they wanted to, to fall under. And then, um, they are of course representing the parents and community as well.
So are these sub, uh, subcommittee members, I mean, these subcommittee meetings, are they planning what's going to go forward for our five-year plan?
So they provide input. So the way that it works is back to slide, uh, six. That, let you know, those are the specific components that are given to us from the VDOE that we must follow. And so each subcommittee is divided into those particular areas. Um, and so within each area, we focus on those particular components from the current plan and then they give us feedback. We also look at all of those pieces that I shared with you of data to use as a, a reference resource during that time. So yes, they, they give us, um, feedback and information. We take that back. We come back to the table again and then they'll look through what they gave us and then we'll make those modifications and changes. Um, when we solicit input from the community from that document, it will be an open-ended kind of, um, document where it has a text box and they can provide us with things that they would like us to consider within each of these areas as well.
Let's see. Uh, are school board members invited to attend at least, uh, watch or listen?
You're welcome to.
Okay, but I, I would like to be notified though if you do have a subcommittee meeting.
Well, see, we have.
No, no, no. I just meant like, I don't know, maybe we should appoint one or two, but I, I, I'm interested.
We can certainly look at ways for you all to participate. We had to be, um, you know, we had to do it strategically with our, our GCAC members as well so that they had an opportunity to participate and still fall under those FOIA guidelines.
Right, so, well, if you put, if you put an email out and, and you get two people, then you'd have to say, okay, we already have two. Can't have three at the same meeting, but I, I'm not interested in giving you a whole lot of input, but I'd like to listen about what's happening.
If I could add, uh, the best comparison I can give you is, is the work that we've done around the strategic action and, uh, or I'm sorry, the strategic ad hoc committee developed the strategic plan. So as you know, as you saw today in the, um, admin matters, there's two hours on the retreat in July for the board to engage in a discussion about the five-year plan for the gifted. So at that point in July, you will have received and that the committees will have been done, uh, a great deal of work that you'll be able to consider and provide input on in July. And of course you'll again get an opportunity in August to take a look at the final product to provide another round of feedback or input as we work towards getting the next plan developed and approved in the fall.
Thank you. That, that's helpful information. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Um, so are there any parents on the committee who are not employees?
Yes, and, uh, those are our GCAC members are the representatives of our parents.
So, but when I'm looking at this, it, it, it has parents as separate. So I would assume that there would be parents that are separate from the gifted advisory committee. How many parents that are not employees do we have on this subcommittee?
So all of our gifted advisory committee are, um, most of them serve as parents. Not all of them are parents. Um, but they all are in one of the, the subcommittees. And I don't know which ones are parents or which ones aren't. I mean, I have an idea.
Yeah, I, I would really like to know how many actual parents who aren't employees are a part of this committee because this is a really big deal. We need to have a lot of parents represented on this committee, uh, especially in light of what has happened in the past. We've had a number of parents email us with concerns already that this hasn't been a transparent process. Um, I'm sure that many of these parents would be interested in serving on this subcommittee and they would volunteer their time. We have a lot of parents who, um, are experts in this area. So I, um, Dr. Robertson, I would like to ask that you make sure that we have plenty of parent representation that aren't employees on this committee.
Yeah, I, I agree, Ms. Manning. Uh, there is a consideration here. We have a group of parents that are still, um, distraught over what they feel happened last year. This committee is working on the development of the next five-year plan. My worry is that as we increase the size of the committee, there will be members who want to go back and revisit what happened last year when the purpose of this committee is to develop the next five-year plan. So we will be mindful of, uh, adding additional parents, but it won't be helpful if we add additional parents who want to take us back to decisions that were made prior to that have already been litigated because this committee is working on the next five-year plan. Now, we're also going to give the cert, the, uh, parents the opportunity through the K-12 insight survey to not only answer questions, but also to give comments that we'll share with the full board of all their comments. Many of the considerations they've given us at this point, uh, for potential remedies for this year are going to be considered for next year. And so I just want to make sure that we have, recognize we have two distinct challenges here. One, this is developing the next five-year plan, so we need forward thinking. And then if this board wanted to look at anything related to what happened last year, that's a separate issue.
Well, I, I understand that it is somewhat of a separate issue and I think these parents are rightfully upset. I, I would be as well. Um, but, uh, and I'm not saying it has to be these parents that are part of the committee, but we need to make sure that we have appropriate parent representation, not considering a, a parent who's also an employee. I've seen that happen way too many times on our committees. Um, I want parents who are not employees. And then a, another point that I'll just, I would like to make, since school board members aren't going to be a part of these subcommittees, I'd like to throw out ideas if that's okay. Um, and I've, I've spoken with, um, some of my colleagues about this and we've heard from Dr. Plucker who was here, um, Dr. Bott, one of the parents who gave us some great suggestions, um, of ideas of how we can improve such as satellite gifted locations through our division, um, that could accommodate some of, um, our gifted students that are higher up on the continuum that, um, are not being serviced at old donation school. Um, so I would really like the committee to give that, um, due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Franklin.
Sorry, my request to speak is not working right now. So I, I wanted to just make sure that, you know, I, I have, along with Mr. Callen, you know, we've had several conversations. Um, I was actually there with you at the special education committee meeting. And when, when you were looking at how they're doing subcommittees, so I, I think that one of the emails we received as a board talked about the transparency of these subcommittees and I want to make sure that it's understood that it was a, it was something that was working in our special education committee. They run a very efficient meeting. It was working well. They have, um, similar goals in terms of looking forward and what they need to do to stay compliant. Um, and so what I think that your, your hope was when you bravely stepped into this role um, was to, was to enhance what we were doing in the gifted committee. And so with that and with the task of having to look at the five-year plan, I think that that is why you felt and the commit, and the leadership felt that having more input in this process would be better, which is the reason why forming these subcommittees, which was not supposed to be something that was not transparent, but actually more transparent um, and provide more transparency, I should say, um, was, was developed. So I want, I just want the public to understand the reasoning behind doing the subcommittees was to create more transparency, not less. Um, and provide more input, not less. And so, and because we already have a working committee that does an amazing job with their subcommittees. I, I mean, I, I've been fortunate to attend several meetings this year and, you know, I, I've got to say, I mean, they, they have it, you know, on point with every single meeting, um, for special education in terms of breaking out, talking about things, coming back together very efficiently. So, so I think that, that I, the public needs to understand why all these subcommittees were, were starting to take place. Okay? And then on top of that, I did want to just make sure that, um, that, you know, as we're talking about this, with moving forward with this five-year plan and I was looking at the, um, at the timeline. Um, I know that we have a GCAC meeting coming up in May. So can we just help advise the public how they can be aware of, um, of that and how they can understand, how they can follow along with, if they're interested, um, in, in, you know, what's going on in the, in the gifted committee? You know, we have a few openings as, as well. So I, I, I just would like for you to address that, please.
Absolutely. Um, so we do have a, a meeting coming up on, on Monday where we're going to be meeting with the GCAC for the final time for this school year. Um, all of that information, the agendas and all of the information is posted on our Virginia Beach Schools website. We work collaboratively to ensure that we are addressing, um, the needs and what they want to discuss during that time. And we help to formulate, um, the agenda in partnership with the chair and the co-chair of the GCAC. There is an opportunity for members of the community to come and to listen. It's, uh, open to the public, so we encourage you to come and, and listen and kind of learn more about the gifted, um, instructional practices and processes that are in place. And we certainly have these, um, conversations as it surrounds the five-year plan. Um, the coming meeting, we will be having an opportunity to, um, to talk through those vacancies that we have and, um, we're really excited to say that we have a lot of people who have applied for those vacancies. So it was a really nice, um, you know, I guess there's been some issues filling them sometimes in the past. So we were really glad to see the support from the community. So don't ever hesitate to not only attend, but to, to apply for those committees when we have openings.
That's great. Um, Mrs. Brown.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I appreciate all of this information and I also appreciate, um, the knowledge that there's going to be more discussion about this at the summer retreat because one of the questions I had was, you know, whether or not we were going to have an opportunity to talk about it more and, and more depth as we, um, progressed along. I think on my time on the school board, um, gifted education is probably one of the things that I have gotten the most, uh, community input on, um, in the long term. You know, there's been stuff that pops up that gets a lot of input, but this one has been a consistent and ongoing, uh, discussion and, um, you know, I, I understand that the pacing may be different at ODS. Is that correct? Of the, so the curriculum isn't a s, own curriculum, but it's presented more quickly. Is that?
It can be a pacing. Uh, it certainly is based on the, the students in each individual class and, um, grade levels are different. I know that, um, as Mr. Goldenshue and I have spoken, um, some of the things of pacing is different in middle school versus the elementary. So those differences are definitely there depending on the needs of the students.
Okay, um, so my next question is about the, um, community input survey and the open-ended text box. So, um, since I've been on the board, sometimes there's been some surveys that go out and we see the survey, but it kind of seems to maybe look to funnel people in a certain direction. Um, I, is that something that the school board will have the opportunity to see and make sure, uh, they are okay with going out? Because I kind of feel like there's been a couple that I would maybe done a little differently.
You mean in advance of it going out to the parents or as their responses come in? Okay, in advance.
Yep, I, I think the school board should, um, at least have that, um, the meeting before it goes out so that if there's any concerns from the collective body, uh, that we can, you know, provide those suggestions.
Yeah, so, um, timing is not on our side. So we can share the survey with the board, but if we wait, we wait until May fourteenth to share with the board and it's, it's due to go out May fifteenth for that two-week period, then that could be problematic versus we could share the, the, uh, survey with the board the week prior to the meeting. And if we haven't heard anything from the board by the fourteenth, well, then we're prepared to hit go on the fifteenth. So you'll still have a week to review.
I think that's fine. Um, I just, I just want to make sure that we have a, a review because the last time I looked at something, it was kind of right before a holiday weekend. I wasn't going to send out a nasty grandma holiday weekend. So, um, yeah, I just, I think that's important. And then, um, I, I do understand, you know, the historical concerns and that this is, you know, for the future. But I, I do think when we look to improvement, historical concerns are indicators of need for change. And so I'm happy to hear that there's, um, some enhancements being considered. I'd be very interested to hear what those are. Um, and when you talk about independent studies, um, and M cubed, are those, um, technology-based programs, uh, specifically?
So we're going to provide, um, professional learning on how to conduct independent studies. So that's going to involve GRTs getting training and many of them have previous training, but we want to elevate this and speaking to community members and parents of gifted learners. That's something even as a former principal, parents might ask me, can my child do an independent study, um, during their independent block? Or, um, if they show mastery on an assessment that they take, a pre-assessment for a unit. And so what we are going to train on is alignment to the standards for science and writing. And we're going to provide some examples and parameters so that we make sure they're not selecting a topic that's controversial or maybe inappropriate for the age group and then they can conduct research and writing on those things. They could create something. There's so many different pathways that the child really has a lot of agency with input and guidance from the GRT and the teacher along the way to demonstrate their knowledge and learning. So you might have heard of passion projects. Um, this might have a little bit more level of feedback loops in it than something like that.
And you know, I, I think too, um, when it, when it comes to communicating with our families and kind of waiting on the parents to provide some of that information, you know, there are some families, um, that um, may, may believe that, um, their gifted students are being, um, challenged extra. And so what I don't want to find out is that, um, we're waiting for the families to come and ask about it based on an email communication and leaving out, um, a group of individuals that really could use that. And then, you know, you can't get back time. We don't get a second chance. So.
We agree.
All right.
So there will be a elevated focus on identifying data points and doing those pre-assessments to ensure that we're programming effectively.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson. Yeah, it was reversed. It was reversed, that's why.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, I, I just want to reiterate something that Mrs. Manning said. I want to make sure that, that you understand that we, she and I both agree on the satellite sites. I mean, Dr. Plucker actually recommended some satellite sites and I, it's, I'm very much in favor of that and feel like if we can create some satellite sites, uh, as well as what we currently have with ODS. But if we have, if we create some satellite sites across the city, we might be able to accommodate more, uh, gifted students uh, with the curriculum similar to what they do at ODS. So I'm very much in favor of that and hopefully that will be a part of our five-year plan. And I hope that some of the subcommittees will, will, you know, put that in place. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I just had a, a question, I think, for clarification. Think around slide two when, uh, you were telling us about kind of the continuum of gifted services. I heard a mention of, uh, the Plaza IB somewhere in there. Is that considered part of the continuum? Because then I didn't see those words on here.
No, it's not. So you do not have to be identified gifted. There are a lot of gifted students in the NYPD program um, and at Princess Anne High School IB, but you do not have to have that as a prerequisite to apply to the program. Um, a lot of divisions will give you a continuum and they'll list advanced academic programs. You know, that is certainly something we're thinking about. Are we? Are we doing a good enough job putting out there all of the different pathways that we provide? But the ones displayed here now are only available if you have that identification in Virginia Beach.
Okay, so the, um, the IB program provides a, a more rigorous, uh, more rigorous opportunities for middle school students. And it was just mentioned in terms of another rigorous opportunity.
Right.
It's an application program, so it would, it would be an advanced academic program.
Okay. And then I just had one other question kind of around that. In terms of applications for, uh, the IB program, do you know, uh, are we, volume-wise, when students apply, is everybody who qualifies? Do we have enough spots? Is this another, uh, program where we don't have enough spots? I'm asking just because we mentioned it as a.
With that specific information, um, I do not believe everybody that applies gets into that program. Thank you.
Mr. Callen.
Since we're in a bit of a thinking-out-loud brainstorming mode, I'm thinking that Dr. Robertson in the past had made reference to the possibility of adding another third-grade class in the ODS environment in order to accommodate some of this excessive need that might exist. If in fact that's a correct reflection, Dr. Robertson, uh, can you expound or elaborate on that a little bit? To help us understand whether or not that's a shoe that might be a fit for consideration?
Uh, certainly. So, um, earlier this year, when we did our building utilization, uh, review, just independent of, um, this issue, we found that, uh, as we find in many schools, there's a science lab, uh, located at ODS on the middle school side that, um, is being underutilized and could actually be retrofitted and turned into a classroom to serve twenty-six additional students. Fast forward to the challenges that we have in front of us right now. There's been suggestions by some of the parents, um, whose children did not get in, that certainly couldn't we, uh, open up another third-grade classroom next year, to serve at least twenty-six of those families who didn't get in. The litigation that went through this year was not, uh, it was not favorable to the timeframe to have a, a rich discussion about that. So hence, we are sitting here on April twenty-ninth, um, with six weeks left in the school year, standard learning test starting in two weeks. Um, and the potential to open up another classroom for twenty-six students is something that could be done because we do have a classroom we can retrofit. Uh, but then the question becomes, is it for third grade next year? Because there are other grades that, uh, students have, um, tested to get into open seats that, um, may want to make the case that, well, why not us? So if the board wanted to find a solution, um, for that group of families who didn't get in, then there are potentially twenty-six seats. But I think we've got a couple of issues here. Uh, again, because it's April twenty-ninth and because we have a standard process where families apply for, um, seats in ODS every year, uh, that, that process is complete. Those scores are done. Uh, we have, um, more students qualifying at the very highest level than number of seats open right now. If we didn't open up another classroom, uh, if we did open up another classroom, if it was third grade, then all of the students at the very top level would get in. And you could go down to the next level and the next level to see, um, whether or not there will be a perfect number where you would not have to use a random draw. That's, and we believe that could be the case depending on how many seats open. But then the, the issue becomes, we would have to amend the five-year plan again. Which means we would come back to you May fourteenth with the information to amend the five-year plan, the current five-year plan, for then the board to vote on May twenty-eighth on the amendment to the five-year plan. Uh, and now we're at two weeks left in the school year. So if the board wanted to make that decision, and I think the board would also have to decide, do you exclude any families who were finding out about this on May twenty-eighth? That this indeed was approved? Well, if you didn't put in, sorry, you know, there was a process. You didn't follow the process. We changed the rules in May. We, we, we can't reopen, um, the, the whole process because there's two weeks left in the school, school year. That's testing kids, that's sharing the information, testing kids, reconvening the committee. Time is not on our friends. So that would be a second consideration the board would have to make. If you want to open up additional classroom, we could, we could make the space in the classroom. We could staff it with a teacher. Then the board, we'd have to amend the five-year plan, and then the board would be faced with, okay, are we going to only use those kids who have already tested? And those families recognizing, there's probably going to be some families who are going to be very upset that this opportunity came about and now they can't take advantage of it. And so that's just something the board's gonna have to weigh. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it, is it? Thank you very much. Okay, tonight on the consent agenda, we have four resolutions. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, yes, sir.
Ms. Melvin, I'm sorry. Um, I wanted to clarify that I understand the marching orders from what we've heard tonight. We want parents on each of those committee, parents not of school age. Cause right now, we're predominantly parents, whether they're GCAC or they're parents of school. So we can, we have applicants. We can increase, uh, on those committees, put parents on those committees to answer some of the questions we got today from several of the, of the, um, so I, I think that's, that's reasonable.
I see, I see a lot of head nods.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll make sure we publicize the meetings on our website that are upcoming. The next one's May twentieth, so anyone who wants to go and observe, they can. We'll share the survey with the board as part of the agenda packet next Thursday. If the board has any questions about the survey questions, please give those directly to me. So that we can make any, uh, revisions and share it with you again on the fourteenth. It won't be for a vote, kind of, we, it'll be, uh, showing that we've received your feedback so that we can push go on the fifteenth.
Okay. And so, um, besides the, um, on, on our website, po- posting this on our website, can, I know principals typically send out a weekly newsletter. Could they maybe, um, put it in the newsletter?
Yeah, Mr. Delaney can make that happen.
Okay, that might be helpful. Parents definitely see those. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to our consent agenda. Tonight we have four resolutions. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Teacher Appreciation Week, and School Nurse Appreciation Day. In addition, we have six Policy Review Committee recommendations. Policy four dash sixteen, resignation and job abandonment. Policy four dash four eight, leave of absence for employee and professional organization presidents. Policy five dash one, extent of school authority. Policy five dash two, student rights and responsibilities. Policy five dash three, formulation of student rules and regulations. And policy six dash twenty, school division curriculum. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent items this evening? All right. Hearing none, I call to move an, um, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, a consent agenda as presented. Motion ba- made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. All right, and so tonight we will start with, um, Asian American and Pacific Island, Islander Heritage Month. And who has that?
I have that.
Okay.
Whereas the month of May is set aside to honor the contributions Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made to our city and country. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are an integral part of our city's great mosaic of citizens. And whereas Virginia Beach has a significant Filipino population, at least four percent and growing, that continues to shape the city's culture. And whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population, comprised of more than forty-five distinct ethnicities and more than a hundred language dialects. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support, celebrate, and participate in various school and community activities during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia, Virginia Beach this thirtieth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Kendrick.
For the Jewish American Heritage Month, whereas on April twentieth, two thousand six, the federal government proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month. A time to celebrate and recognize Jewish American contributions to American culture, history, education, and government. And whereas the Jewish people have profoundly sustained their identity and traditions while facing oppression, discrimination, and persecution. And whereas the Jewish community continues to devote their skills and energy to make invaluable contributions to our city and country through leadership and achievements. And whereas there is a need for public education, awareness, and policies that are culturally competent when describing, discussing, or addressing the impacts of being a Jewish American in all aspects of American society, including discourse and policy. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby recognizes May as Jewish American Heritage Month and supports opportunities for all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor and learn more about Jewish American history and culture. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this thirtieth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Ms. Riggs.
The resolution for Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas research shows that classroom teachers have a significant impact on student achievement and success. And whereas teachers' efforts in planning, teaching, and assessing directly impact student growth. And whereas teachers work in collaboration with school administrators and staff to engage families and the community to create challenging, authentic learning opportunities for children. And whereas the school board appreciates the hard work and time teachers dedicate to support student achievement, both inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas this dedication contributes to a strong, positive school culture. And whereas the school division has partnered with our parents and community members to express our appreciation for educators, including our incredible teachers, through the hashtag VB Schools Heroes, Hero Campaign. And whereas the school division and community will launch this campaign to highlight the work of our extraordinary educators throughout Teacher Appreciation Week and the remainder of the school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes May sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all community members to support and participate in activities designed to recognize teachers for their tireless work, tireless work as educational leaders. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be distributed to each school and the division to be posted in a prominent location adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this thirtieth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. And Ms. Anderson.
Whereas school nurses are individuals in the forefront who work with families, teachers, and administrators to ensure students of Virginia Beach City Public Schools have the safest and healthiest possible environment in which to learn. And whereas good health is essential to the learning process and student achievement. And whereas the goal of every professional school nurse is to help each student reach or maintain an optimum level of wellness. And whereas school nurses provide direct nursing care, provide health screenings and follow-ups, provide health-related programs within the school system, provide health counseling and act as resources to teachers on health education issues. And whereas school nurses serve the children of Virginia Beach Schools with dedication, working diligently to make healthy, to make he- health a priority for children during their regular school day. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach designates May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, as School Nurse Appreciation Day in Virginia Beach. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this thirtieth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. And for the record, again, the motion was made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. The voting board is now open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. This morning we have, I mean, this evening we have four items, um, under action. And we will start first with the personnel report and administrative appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, so the motion did pass for the personnel report.
So thank you, Madam Chair. I am, um, appreciative that, uh, tonight you've approved, uh, that Darni- Dr. Darnita Troutman, currently the Director of Employment Services in Department of Human Resources. She approved that she'll be the next Chief Human Resources Officer in the Department of Hu- Human Resources effective July one.
Next.
Uh, and she'll be recognized in their next meeting.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I call for a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five general fees schedule, including the rates for student fees for optional ancillary services or activities. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the general fee schedule for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I call for a motion to approve the Workforce Development Committee Recommendations. Motion made by Ms. Manning, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. Any discussion? So I will let you know that I did hear from Mrs. Weems this afternoon, who did tell me that she does approve the recommendations, um, this evening. And has asked that if this does pass, that we consider, um, making this a standing committee. So we'll have to talk about that later as a board, but that's what she would have said if she were here. Anybody else? Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um, so I was only on one meeting so far of the Workforce Development Committee. But, um, I will say that it was very evident how proud, uh, the committee was of all the collaboration and work, um, with community and business leaders. And so I, I think that we are making good progress there. And I do think that this awareness is, is really needed, uh, surrounding our workforce development. So really happy that this is coming to vote. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Riggs.
She was talking about making this one of the committees.
Well, it's something the board can talk about later, but if she were here, she would have asked, um, for us to, you know, to be thinking about that as we, um, do our work in July with the formation of new committees.
Well, we also have to look at and consider how we're going to incorporate that into our advisory group that we have for.
Yes. There is a, there is a standing advisory committee. Um, in addition, there, uh, Dr. Robertson has a phenomenal superintendent's roundtable with really some remarkable members of the community who, who, who is doing a, a lot of this work also. So I think it's going to be worth a discussion to see maybe how we can combine, um, some of this work to continue the great, the great stuff that's happening in our community.
Yeah, and I'll offer that the fact that we're in three groups is probably a good thing right now.
Yeah.
Cause in mathematics, it's called triangulation.
Okay.
All right. And we're coming at the workforce in three different areas today. Uh, Sarah Lockett, Bobby Jameson. Uh, Sarah Lockett, Bobby Jameson, and I've toured uh, Tywater Tech Aviation Maintenance Institute and Centura College to look at additional opportunities for our students uh, to take advantage of the one hundred and twenty-four welding labs they have at Tywater Tech. Um, the Aviation Mechanics Institute that they have that offers some opportunities for our kids to take advantage of that while they're in school. Um, I have got a meeting on Friday with Sarah and Matt Delaney with a new company down the street who also is doing welding and needs people so bad, they're hiring them without any experience. So we're gonna try to hook them up with our kids right away. But the fact is, the meeting we had today was born out of two conversations. One that I had from, from the VB CPS Community Roundtable. And the other one was the Workforce Development Committee. So it was the second conversation that got the person to go, yep, let's put this together. So I think we, as long as the three groups are continuing to communicate and share, we might be stronger by not joining into one group.
Yeah, that's, that's a great suggestion. And um, I will tell you, since I'm on the roundtable, we think we know so much of what is going on, but it is actually shocking when you're sitting with a group of people that say, I had no idea that that existed. And so you're right. So we'll uh, we'll bring all that forward. That's great. And I thank Mrs. Weems for her work on this committee over the past year. All right. And so uh, seeing no more discussion, the voting board is open. So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the Workforce Development Committee Recommendations. Excellent. I call for a motion to approve the nomination of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Ad Hoc Workforce Committee, the Virginia Beach Community Roundtable, and the General Advisory Committee for Technical and Career Education for the twenty twenty-four V S B A Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? Other than this is just truly fantastic. I mean, this um, highlights really the work this division um, does. And we've seen that all evening tonight in so many ways. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, the voting board is open. So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, so the motion did pass. Okay, does anybody have any, does anybody have anything to report for committees, organization, or board report? Okay, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to share that I had the opportunity to uh, be with Ocean Lakes High School uh, last night for their academic uh, letter ceremony. And I had the opportunity to speak, which was both nerve-wracking and uh, wonderful. But five hundred and four students uh, received uh, the academic letter or star if they had already gotten the academic letter for maintaining a three point five GPA or more over three or more semesters and having uh, excellent uh, behavior and whatever else is involved with that. But very impressive. I know that that's not the only high school where we have that level of academic rigor and achievement, but it's always just really fun to see, especially at my alma mater.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, well, this meeting is adjourned. It is seven thirty-three. Everybody drive safely.